Because there's two sides to every story. Because I gotta be honest with you, if even one, if even one of these things is true, then that's dangerous. And I'm praying that none of these are true. But I would like to offer him the opportunity, you know, at a controlled, a controlled meeting where it would just be, and I don't know if the firefighters would be opposed to this or not, but it would just be Chief Davis and either all of council or some of council to ask him to answer the questions. And the only reason I say that, to do it that way first, just first, so that we don't have, we wouldn't have a back and forth and arguing session. And then after we got his answers, then we can see about having a meeting, I would think, with all of us. But, because some of them are, man, are very, very serious. And if I was Chief Davis, I'd wanna defend myself, and I'm sure he does. That would be my suggestion, and I don't know if the rest of council would be willing to go along with that. I just felt that being it is my committee, I needed to say something on it. So I would ask the rest of council if you would consider that, consider that suggestion. Thank you.
I would be very willing to consider that. And since it is a personnel issue, I would imagine that would be protected under the sunshine law, to be a closed meeting, would it not?
I think that's correct. I think that's correct, because it would deal with hiring, firing, and that personnel. So I think it ought to be a confidential meeting.
I'm sorry. The only reason I asked, and that it'd be appropriate, maybe to have a stenographer there, so that, you know, there would be no misinterpretation on what was said. Because again, God, these are, these are some serious, serious accusations. And I certainly think the gentleman has the right to defend himself.
Well, I would agree with that. And then council could discuss it afterwards. So perhaps we could try between now and next week to set a time and a date for that session to occur.
Maybe Mr. McGough, seeing as you're the president, if you would like to poll council outside of here, you know, maybe, I don't know that we wanna, I don't know if you wanna discuss it here, but maybe you could poll Southside here, see if they're willing to do it. And if everybody is, if we have three that are willing, who you would think needs to be there or not be there, you know?
If we can wait five minutes after the meeting?
Sure. And I, I'm sorry. I'm not even saying today, if you feel comfortable calling tomorrow. That's fine by me, if that's fine by the rest of you. And if, and I hate to prolong this, but it's a serious issue. If and when, you know, we would have that meeting, Mr. McGough, and we had our answers, then, at that point in time, maybe we could, we could all meet.
I just, I just don't think these, these questions could go unanswered, because in all fairness to everybody, some people are gonna believe that these are all true, some people are gonna believe that none of these are true. And when something like this happens, unfortunately, I think I have to answer them. So if that's, if that's all right with the rest of the members?
Why don't, how about if I make a motion?
Okay.
That Mr. Courtwright and Mr. McGough set up a meeting to discuss these allegations and then come back to council with results?
That'd be great.
I'll second that.
There is a motion to, to set up a meeting between Mr. Chief Davis and members of council, selected members of council, to discuss the allegations made by the firefighters.
On the question?
On the question.
I would be willing to forego being present at that meeting if there is a stenographer, because I would like the meetings of that meeting, meeting, the minutes of that meeting, excuse me, made available to everyone on council.
Yeah, I wouldn't feel comfortable having it without that, because I certainly wouldn't wanna be held accountable for what Chief Davis said. You know, let it, let it be on the record, and then every member of council could have it, and if there's something council needs to do, fine, if it's, if we're out of our league in this, then, you know. I'm recommending a stenographer.
The only thing that I, if we in fact ask for this meeting, it, being a management issue, I'm sure it will be, the meeting would be at the discretion of the mayor. I don't think that we can compel Chief Davis himself, so the request would have to go through the mayor, director of public safety, and whatever other.
Yeah, that, I'm sure that's the proper way to do it.
Okay. I, I would be, well, I would be more than happy to make that contact and make whatever arrangement is necessary.
Okay.
Need a vote?
There's a vote.
Need a vote on the motion?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, so moved.
I have several other matters to address this evening, particularly in light of my absence due to illness on February 5th. And I do apologize to the people for missing a meeting. I was ill, and I ask for your understanding. First, the Scranton Times reported the city's principal long-term debt is $94 million. Following the release of the 2006 audit on February 7th, 2008, I obtained my copy to determine an accurate financial status. As of December 31st, 2006, the Doherty Long-Term Debt is $226,925,015. This figure includes principal and interest, as well as the debts amassed by the Scranton Redevelopment Authority, Parking Authority, and Sewer Authority, and the debt service for capitalized leases. $227 million in debt through the year 2033. Please keep in mind this figure. $227 million does not, does not include the $35 million-plus interest borrowed in 2007 by the Parking Authority, nor does it include the proposed $11 million-plus interest the mayor will borrow this year. By year's end, we will reach approximately $300 million in long-term debt. Don't allow the apologists from the Scranton Times and this administration to spin this figure any other way. If the truth be told, they know, and I know, that principal applies to your payoff today. And we all know that is an utter impossibility for Scranton. Ladies and gentlemen, do you worry about your mortgage payoff today? Or do you think of your mortgage payments over 25 years? Do you pay $25,000 for your new car today? And if you do, you're a lucky individual. But if you're like most of us, you take a four- or five-year loan for maybe $35,000 to $40,000 in principal and interest. So think critically. Think for yourselves. Is your life better, safer today for $300 million in long-term Doherty debt? $227 million in five years? $300 million in seven years? So plan for your future in our city, at least through the year 2033. Is this the mayor's recovery? His recovery is a financial nightmare. Remember, union workers had no changes, no changes whatsoever in six years, so you can't blame them. Health care? It appears that through at least October 2007, health care costs were under budget, according to PAL, the Pennsylvania Economy League. So the excuses are weak. Does our city need recovery? Absolutely, yes. Now more, much more than we did in 2002. But we need smart recovery. The former recovery plan actually terminated in 2005, and PAL stated that it was working on a revised plan in 2007, and I hope it is. I hope for smart recovery. Halt wasteful spending. Stop the borrowing. Settle union contracts and pay down the debt. And as a side note, initial stages of the 2007 independent audit began in January 2008. Now, in response to Mr. DeSarno's question posed three weeks ago regarding frivolous spending, I do not approve of frivolous spending, and my record as a councilwoman reflects that. I've created three balanced budgets to avoid tax increases and to halt the borrowing. I did not vote for any unnecessary borrowing, inflated mayoral budgets, or questionable tax increases, and I won't. Further, I will never agree to contract violations and wasteful litigations. I will never engage in bad faith policies or procedures. And this is not a matter of perception. You can take it to the bank. Next, I wish to commend Kathy Carrera, city grants writer, and five firefighters for obtaining a $318,000 FEMA grant for the fire department communications equipment. Too often, credit is misplaced by the newspaper, and the boss receives the acclaim when the employees have the idea, they do the work, and they bring it to fruition. So thank you to Ms. Carrera and to those five very smart firefighters. Now, I was not surprised to learn that the mayor's committee selected Electric City TV to run channels 61 and 62. And as soon as the announcement to seek proposals occurred, the red flag flew. There are a number of matters that I'd like to bring to the attention of the public. Electric City TV, who received the committee, and hence the mayor's nod of approval, had requested four phases of funding. Phase one, $300,000. Phase two, $200,000. Phase three, $200,000. Phase four, approximately $160,000. I remember when, I think the editorialist called Scranton Today a ward of the state when they requested $25,000 and then got $13,000 from city council. So I'd have to ask, what does this make Electric City TV, a mistress? The free studio that Scranton Today was accused of turning down appears in Electric City's budget, and they would like $28,000 to renovate the studio, and $36,000 in annual maintenance costs. Now, in addition to that, I believe that Marywood University and the University of Scranton operated channel 62 with the assistance of Scranton Today. And nowhere in the Electric City proposal do I see any mention of either Marywood or the university's continued involvement with that station. So that raises a question as well. As far as I'm aware, we seem to be giving almost $1 million to an unknown entity on a promise to deliver without any type of accountability or oversight. I'm not opposed to giving them this money. In fact, I suggested long ago that the franchise fee be used to help fund Scranton Today, hence channel 61, each year of their operation. So this idea comes as no great surprise to me. But I think when we're talking about a million dollars' worth of ratepayers' money, there should be oversight and accountability. Therefore, I move that city council create and appoint an oversight committee to ensure that Electric City TV follows through on all of the promises enumerated in their proposal.
I'll second that.
On the question? Who would comprise this committee?
I believe the committee should be appointed by city council. I was thinking, for example, there might be five members of the committee, and each member of council could appoint one member of the oversight committee.
And the responsibilities of the committee would be?
To report to city council. They will be overseeing what money is given to Electric City TV, how that money has been utilized. And having in hand their proposals, they will check to see that what has been guaranteed in return for this money will indeed occur on channels 61 and 62.
And would they just be like an advisory committee?
They're an oversight committee. And then they would report their findings, whether annually or semi-annually, to council.
Okay, I, I don't mean to belabor it, I'm just trying to go through the process of how it would work, and exactly how the committee, what we would do with the information received from the committee as well.
Well, I think we have the responsibility then to make sure that indeed they are, according to what is reported to us, they are abiding by the terms of the agreement. And if they are not, then the cable franchise fee should be withheld, at least for a period of time in which they would be able to perhaps remedy the situation. But it's a great deal of money that has never been given to that television station since its inception. Never. This is a first. And because it is a first, and because it is such a significant amount of money, there must be oversight. And as it stands, there is none.
You know, on the question, I just think that they are getting such a large amount of money, and we wouldn't give Scranton Today anything, we gave them $13,000. I'd really like to see what they're gonna do with all that money. And if in fact, if we don't have any kind of control over what they're doing, I, I mean, who's to say that they'll even come close to doing what they're saying they're going to do?
And what would be the ramifications if they didn't?
Withhold the money from them. Am I correct?
We don't have the power to do that, right? No.
Does council have the power to withhold?
Well, I think council does have, for example, investigative powers. And when things within any department, let us say, or with this agreement, are amiss, I believe we have the duty and the responsibilities to step in and hold people accountable.
I have no problem holding them accountable. My problem is, at the end of it all, what do we do then? We have the information. We, if we don't have power to say where the money's going or where the money is not going, then what happens? What can we do at the end of it? So I, I have no problem on the idea. I think the idea is a good idea. But we'd have to sit down, and I think we'd have to create something that we would have as a guideline for us, that we know that if this happens, this is what would happen then, maybe create it in the legislation, or create it in some way that we have our power and know what our power is. So I would vote that maybe we table it, discuss what it is that we want after it, maybe that we can hold money, or in the next, in the next budget time, that we are, you know, we do something, whatever the ramifications would be, that we would sit and discuss what we would want those to be. So I would like to make a motion to table it and try to figure out what, what it is we want to do if we do get the information, that we have that legislative.
I think basically you can determine that when you've created, when you've decided, or rather agreed to create the committee. Because we're not, for example, tonight, naming committee members or anything of that nature. So we're merely agreeing tonight to create an oversight committee that would be appointed by city council.
Well, I made a motion to table, and that's on the floor, so if anybody'd like to second, that's all I, I mean, I'm.
Well, you do realize, right, but you, and I have one on the floor that'll be for that. But you do realize that those monies are part of the city's operating budget.
I realize that, quite frankly, yes. That's why I said that we would do something in the next budget year. That's what I'm trying to say. What is it that we can do? Do we withhold the money from the next budget? Because if the money's already been provided with the first budget, and they get the money in the beginning, we have no power to go take the money back from them. So it would be the next budget year was where, where our legislation would lie.
Well, as I outlined, it's coming in four phases. So let us say they proceed with phase one.
Well, right, but they can't get it without us.
If they are not in compliance, they don't go into phase two.
I, I have a motion on the floor. We don't have the power, but let's find out.
Well, I, I think the idea of an oversight committee is fine. And I also think that perhaps we could implement the idea tonight with the possibility of having it included in the contractual language of, you know, the operation of channel 61. Present the idea, you know, to the mayor, and have it included in the actual contract.
Contractual, yeah.
So that that committee would exist, you know, we would, we would have already voted to create the committee.
Right.
And then if in fact, we can include it in the.
As long as we, we have our.
I know that you need to include it in the contract, though. This is coming from the city's side of it. And we do have the power to create, draft legislation, and pass it. So what I would ask, for example, with regard to the suggestion you made, is this. And if the mayor refuses an oversight committee, does that mean then none will ever exist? And this company walks away with $1 million without being held responsible in any way, shape, or form for the five years of their contract?
No, that wasn't what I had in mind. I, I thought that the most effective way of implementing the idea would be to have it within the contract with ECT, is it ECTV?
Yes.
That that would be the most effective way.
I agree.
And if in fact, that there is a disagreement, then I think that we can further discuss it to, you know, implement it in another way. But I think the first step would be to see if we can make it the most effective way. And then, you know, continue from there if in fact it's not done.
Mrs. Evans' motion is just to form the committee.
Right.
So if we form the committee, we can hash this stuff out.
And that's what I said, and that's what I thought was most reasonable.
Right. And then I would love to see it in the, in the contract.
Yeah, definitely.
That'd be great, if you can get it in a contract.
I don't think there's anything, you know, to stop us from creating, you know.
A committee, right.
A committee. And then we can determine at a later date what the specific duties of that committee would be, and how it would operate.
And the membership.
Right. You know, all of that.
Okay.
Since there wasn't a second to your motion.
No, then it's dead.
Then we, we are on the motion. The motion was made and seconded to create an oversight committee for the operation of channel 61.
And, but I had also added, I believe, that the membership would be appointed by city council.
One member for each council.
Did we add that? I just wanna make sure we have the wording properly, so that we're not.
So the motion includes.
To create an oversight committee for ECTV.
Of five individuals appointed by council?
Yes.
Okay, and who on council would appoint?
Each council member.
Each member would pick one. Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, so that's.
With one member appointed by each council member.
Whatever. We can talk about it.
Yeah, we could do that like we do with the.
But so that everyone has a part in this.
Mrs. Garvey, are you?
I'm trying, yeah.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that we have the wording right, and that it's, you know, what we want. And so the, basically the motion is, just so we're clear, to create an oversight committee for channel 61 with membership to be appointed by, with five members with, appointed by the individual members of council.
Staggering terms.
Well, we'll decide that later.
All in, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it, and so moved.
Thank you.
I think.
As of today, February 19th, I received no response from Mr. Hayes and Mr. Brazil for the written snow removal policy. I hope I'm not to assume that there is no policy, or that maybe they withheld the information because they don't like me. But I believe I'm in good company, since hundreds of city residents over the years have told me that they never receive responses as well, or are scolded for their persistence. So maybe, you know, some of these bosses earning the big bucks need a big broom to sweep them out when they don't answer questions, and they won't help citizens with their problems.
Mrs. Evans, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I did receive this to be passed on, and with you missing the, the meeting that you were ill, and I neglected to get this to you in time, but it was received from.
Oh, thank you. So there is one, after all, a draft copy. Okay. And I'm gonna go over that, and I can let you know what that contains next week. Thank you, Mr. McGough.
And I'm sorry for the delay.
No problem. Also, I received numerous emails and letters and a few calls regarding the tree planting in Southside. And some residents noted that the 2,600 block of cedar and the 2,600 and 2,700 blocks of Bernie were, where trees had damaged sidewalks. And I was also asked to read the following note. "We do not need any trees on the 500 block of Maple Street, South Scranton. 520, 524, 526, and 530 Maple Street were senior citizens unable to clean the leaves and dirt from the trees. We had trees planted, and they uprooted the sidewalks, which we had to have repaired. And the leaf truck never showed up, so all the leaves blew back on our properties. We need better streetlights, better roads, and new lines painted on the streets." Well, I'm not going to go on with the note, but I was hoping that perhaps council, on behalf of the residents of just those specific addresses, could send a letter to the Shade Tree Commission and the DPW notifying them that these specific residences would choose not to receive a free tree.
Can I interrupt? No one is going to be getting a tree that doesn't want one.
Right.
They're doing a survey of who wants trees. We've done this before in South Scranton, and the people that did want them took care of them. So no one will be getting a tree that doesn't want.
Well, I understood from the newspaper that they're going to be sending letters to South residents, and these trees can only be planted in low-to-moderate income areas. So.
Only in the Renaissance area, you know, the redevelopment project.
So, yeah, that, I had wished that these people who had contacted me would be aware that they do not have to accept the tree if they don't want the tree. The trees are free. If you don't want the tree, you need not accept it. And I'm sure that there's a way that you will be able to make that clear in writing or. or, you know, if there is a visit to your home. And if you have any other questions or problems about it, you can contact me. "Has council had ample time over the last three weeks to consider the amendment to file of Council 82, 2007? I know in that period of time I've received a number of letters and emails regarding the amendment that I proposed three weeks ago."
Yes, I, just to answer, I looked them over as well.
Then I would like to move the amendment tonight. I move to amend file of Council Number 82, 2007 to approve penalty, interest, and fee schedule for collection of delinquent real estate taxes by striking 3J, $800, and no $100 for the preparation and filing of a writ of execution for sheriff sale; 3K, the actual filing, service, execution, and poundage fees, if any, for service and execution by the Office of the Sheriff of the County, which are in effect at the time of such filing, service, and execution as established by the Office of the Sheriff of the County or such other instrumentality of government as shall be charged with the establishment of such fee. 3L, $175,000 for the preparation, filing, and conduct of proceedings to effect service of process. 3M, $30,000 for costs incurred in connection with the reissuance of writs. 3P, $25,000 for the preparation and filing of any precipy petition or motion to continue a judicial or sheriff's sale. 3Q, $400,000 for attendance by legal counsel at a judicial sheriff or tax sale. And by striking the following dollar amounts: 3A, $25,000 per lien; 3B, $160,000; 3C, $35,000; 3U, and no more than $225,000 per hour commensurate with the attorney's normal hourly rate. And inserting 3A, $10,000; 3B, $40,000; 3C, $30,000."
Second.
On the question.
On the question, before Mrs. Evans had made that motion a few weeks back, Mr. Azuri spoke. And Mr. Azuri, I don't know if you're watching, but I've had like an avalanche of phone calls since you presented yourself here. Evidently, you hit home with other people that had the same problems. So I thank you for coming, and I think it's time we change this ordinance.
And in the interim, I did step into the Single Tax Office and had a very lengthy discussion with Mr. Chuck Cox, who was the interim collector of taxes prior to the appointment of Mrs. Vitale. And I also spoke with a representative of the Single Tax Claims Office of the county of Lackawanna. And they were very helpful. And, you know, neither indicated that sheriff sales had been conducted, that tax sales had occurred, for example, in the city only as recently as 1998, and houses were never taken by sheriff's sale. And the county provides a payment plan. The county collects only the school district, library, and county taxes, but they will provide a payment plan to any individual who demonstrates need or extenuating circumstances. Their statement was it has never been their intention to take a citizen's home through sheriff's sale, so...
I met with three parties on this, and the city also has that option. In fact, there were four documents that went out on this legislation, all stating, please call us and set up a plan. And I believe, you know, I don't have the exact number, but there was something like 35% of the letters that went out called in the beginning to set up a payment plan. And once the payment plan had started, they were, their process stopped right there. I did look into Mr. Azuri's, exactly Mr. Azuri's after him being here. And the reason his did not was because he never contacted to say, you know, I'll make a plan, I'll send you $2 a week, they, you know, nothing. He never made a contact in years. So that was the problem with Mr. Azuri's. We've also had other people that we sat down and looked at. I had gotten tons of emails myself. And when I went to and spoke to them on behalf of the taxpayer, they actually, NCC fixed, you know, the problem. One was a bad address. They were sending actually their taxes to the wrong address, and they were getting billed for that. They took care of that. And what they said was that they have no problem setting up a payment plan, and that's what the letter stated from, for the past four letters. So that was something I was happy to see. You know, they're not looking to take the house either. In fact, they have not implemented the sheriff's sales or taken over the house. When the speaker got up a few weeks ago and stated that the city was taking this woman's home, I knew that not to be a fact, because that had not happened to anyone in the city. So that might have been a little bit of my reaction when sometimes people get up and misinform the public of what is going on. So, you know, we do provide that, too. Nobody in the city was looking to take the money. Also, after looking at the legislation, if you take out all of the fees that you are looking to take out, the city and the taxpayers are still going to be responsible for that money.
Well, the...
Right, so the taxpayers...
The city doesn't get that money.
Wait, wait, wait. If we take the legislation out, the city will be responsible for the fees, meaning that the taxpayers who do pay their taxes right now will have to pay those fees, because the motion, we already got the money. We received the money. We received the tax money from the delinquent taxes. We've already received that. And, Mr. McGough, if you want to talk about the meeting with the NCC, that might be something that you want to go into so that they can understand a little bit more about what was said at that meeting.
Well, I just, sorry. Perhaps just to back up a little bit. This legislation was originally passed to deal with delinquent taxes for the years, I believe, 2004, 2005, and 2006. And when it was passed, NCC sent letters to all of the names that they received, even before they had, I'm going to say before there was the authority to do that. Just a letter sent letting people know that these fees and penalties were going to be enacted and imposed. That was in July of 2007. And within the month of July, they received back, I forget the dollar amount, but it was a significant amount of, people responded and paid their taxes for those delinquent years. Should also note that many of these letters that were sent, and again, I didn't, I don't have the percentage, but a number of them were to, were out of the area, that a significant number were out of the area. Then in November of 2007, a formal letter was sent to those people who had not, or, let me back up. If people even made an attempt, if people contacted NCC at that time, after that July letter, there were no fees or penalties imposed from this legislation. It was stopped. And any payment plan did not include these. In November, a formal letter was sent notifying people that they had 30 days to respond, and at the end of that 30 days, that these penalties would in fact take place.
No, the people were charged those penalties. Yes, they were. I have the, I have the evidence at home, right from NCC. They were charged extra. The bill went from $100 and some dollars up to several hundred dollars within the 30-day time limit.
Well, I have the report from Patricia Cobb, and she states that...
And she's the attorney for NCC.
She, right, right. That the, they collected, in three months prior to NCC, they started on April 1st, and they put out the first letter. Nothing was changed in the fees, nothing, until they notified the people that they had 30 days, and if, and the fee was not implemented. So that's what she's saying. And for the 2005, 2006 tax years. Then they said, you have 30 days to call and make up a payment plan. Every opportunity has been afforded to the delinquent taxpayer to give advance notice prior to implementation of any fee. And the current SRA project was no exception. They said that they, they always do that, that that's not a new procedure. They've done that from day one. In June, they alerted the delinquent taxpayer of the pending sale of the taxes due to SRA. Now, this is the problem. We received the money. We sold our delinquent taxes to a company. They gave us the money. We did this, why? Because we didn't want to have to raise taxes. We wanted to try to get some money from people who owed us money already. This was the delinquent taxpayer from 2005 to 2007, well, '07 is included also. They did not put the fees on them, but they were notified. So you had time to make up a payment schedule. You had time to say, listen, I have a problem, I'm not going to be able to do that. They have not put more taxes on or more money on anyone who has made a payment schedule. So to me, that's what this is about. And we also, you know, since then, 25% more money has come into the city in 2007, since we did put these fees on and implement them, because people knew now we have a recourse. Before, the county did have a reason, and a good reason, to be able to take your houses, because they had legislation. We did not have legislation. We had nothing to be able to say we can collect the fees. That's why they're paying their county taxes, and they're paying their state taxes, and they were leaving the city dry. So I don't believe that any of these fees, you know, are put out there for people not to be able to stop. I mean, it's not like we're just saying, okay, we're going to, this is going. This ball is in motion. It's going to keep going, keep going, keep going, and we're going to get all this money. And you have no say if you do not, you can't afford it, if the seniors cannot afford this. That's not, that's not how it works. They still have the right, just like anything else. When your credit card comes in the mail, you have to call and make up a schedule, a payment schedule. And as long as you do that, these fees will never happen, never.
Well, this gentleman, who was 88 years old, was not given the option of a payment plan. He was given 30 days in which to pay the initial amount plus the extra, let's say, $300 plus by that 30th day. And if not, beyond that, it jumped up to $2,000. So there was no payment plan within that 30-day time period. But, again, I anticipated this three weeks ago when I introduced it the first time. I anticipated that, you know, of course, you're going to seek other opinions. But I have to say, it is a questionable reference when it's coming from the very company that's reaping the rich financial benefits of that piece of legislation. Of course, they're going to defend it. They're getting very rich off it. And, you know, senior citizens, people will talk about get a reverse mortgage. Well, you know what? There's an awful lot of working families that are in these circumstances. They're not old enough to apply for a reverse mortgage. And senior citizens, yes, I know very well how meticulous they are about paying their bills. But you can't get blood from a stone. If the money isn't there, the money isn't there. They're not hiding it under their mattress because they intend to take it with them over at Cathedral Cemetery. They haven't got it. So now, you know, we're just going to proceed along with a sheriff's sale, which is something that, you know, to my knowledge, has only been a regular occurrence with, for example, banks and mortgages and mortgagees. And we're stepping right into that territory, not to make the city rich, but to make an outside agency rich.
We received 90% of our back taxes for selling this legislation.
We received taxes, and we place a 10% per annum on top of that. NCC places a 25% on top of that, plus everything in that legislation.
If a phone call is not made to make up a payment plan. So, yes, I do feel...
And why were people not offered payment plans?
They were all offered payment plans.
No, they were not.
Did you make a phone call to NCC on behalf of that 80-year-old man?
I've, no, I didn't, but I've actually been to NCC since I've been on council.
Yes, once, at 4 o'clock. They told us that you were there. But what I want to ask you is...
Did they? What else did they say?
They did. They said, no, I said, I said, was she here? I asked. I said, was she here? Because I wanted to know where the information you were provided from, and they said you were there.
Was it John Catula you spoke with?
No, I spoke to everyone. I spoke to 10 people.
Oh, John Catula, and, yes, and the attorney.
And they said, I said, I said, did you, did you speak to Mrs. Evans on behalf of this legislation? Of course I did, of course.
Well, I'm very glad that they told you about my visit. Did they also tell you that they threatened me?
No.
With pulling their business out of Scranton for coming to complain, question, and defend the taxpayers in the city who had been improperly filed against by them. That company's been sued several times.
Well, that's why I'm asking. You should go on behalf of the taxpayer, and that's why I'm saying. If you spoke on that 80-year-old man, like I went on three different occasions about people since we started this discussion, and they did correct problems, problems that were wrong addresses, problems that were...
But the man was down at NCC with his nephew, who's middle-aged. They understand the situation very well. They went to NCC.
And they would not make up a payment plan for him?
No, they would not. No, they would not. And that was the story I brought to you on council in December.
Will you provide his name after the meeting, so that we can...
I don't have the information with me, and I would have to ask the parties involved if they want their name.
Right, because they were, they really have been very helpful with people that I have provided, for them to try to, try to get to them to see if they can come to a...
Well, that would mean, though, that for everyone who has a problem, I think you'd have to be going down there and interceding for them.
No, I think that a phone call to stop your taxes from, your delinquent taxes from going into fees is not, is not something that's unreasonable for the normal taxpayer. I think that people should want to do that. I know myself, I get behind you call, you call, and find out if there's a way you can make payments. And that's, the bottom line is that if you can call and stop the process, and it would take a phone call from what they are saying, then these fees are not going to be tacked on. And I believe that's the bottom line. But I also am happy for the money we received. I am happy for the fact that we increased 25% of our tax base.
And you know what? I bet if we ever had the audacity to pass an amnesty program for a period of months, I bet the city would see triple what it does right now. Because if people were able to pay just the face value of what they owe, I think you'd see that money coming in.
They were offered that opportunity.
From day one.
When were they offered that opportunity?
And the letter was sent from NCC.
For 2005, 2006.
The face value.
Face value, 2005, 2006.
So NCC was not going to collect their 25% fee on top of that. I doubt that very much.
I'll stand corrected on that.
And the city's additional 10%.
Me, um, there, to date, just to back up and, to date since December, in December, after the 30-day period was over, fees were attached. The only fees that were attached were the ones that are on here from A through E. At this point in time, no additional fees have been attached at all. At this point in time, no additional fees have been attached at all. The attempt was that, that the initial, the initial fees were sufficient enough to, should have been sufficient enough to encourage people to pay the delinquent taxes. If not, then, yes, additional fees would be added. But all of these have not been attached at this point in time, only the first five. And with that, as of February, $192,000, over $192,000 has been collected in delinquent I think that there is a need, and I said this before, when the initial legislation came along, I think there is a need for a penalty for people who refuse to pay taxes. I think there are, are there circumstances in which there are people that are hurt by it? Probably. And I think that those can be dealt with, as they have been in some cases. But I think that removing the penalties from the delinquent taxes serves no purpose, that people will continue to not pay.
Well, this doesn't remove all the penalties, though, Mr. McGough. I'm not rescinding the ordinance.
I understand that.
I'm rescinding it.
I understand that.
To make it more reasonable.
I...
There are still, indeed, many penalties, costs, and fees attached to it, because I too favor collecting delinquent taxes. I just don't favor putting my throat on some, or putting my foot on someone's throat and crushing them.
I don't think that that's happening.
Well, of course, that will never happen. That's why it's included here in writing.
I might also mention that taxpayers do have the ability to challenge the reasonableness and validity of fees and penalties from third-party collectors. The municipal claim and tax lien law allows that opportunity. So there are avenues for people to...
I'm well aware of that, but are they going to have the money to hire an attorney to go and challenge this, if they don't even have the money to pay for their delinquency?
I'm just saying that there are opportunities for people to pay their delinquent taxes without onerous penalties being attached. When people refuse to do that, make no effort to do that, then in fact, there needs to be something in place that will compel them in some way to pay those taxes. I don't think that that is unreasonable. And I think that the legislation that was passed is a reasonable attempt to collect the delinquent taxes.
Well, then I just hope we're going to be this meticulous across the board with all taxes, wage taxes, those who have never paid it, those who live here, work out of town, and don't pay it, people whose files have been pulled. Let's be just as meticulous to the rich as we are to the poor.
I would support that whole hard way.
I agree with that 100%.
There's an awful lot out there.
How do you, Mrs. Evans, do you really know that for a fact? Because you bring it up a lot. Is that factual information? Because I believe if that, if that is factual information, that that's something that should be brought forth, right? I mean, if you know that, these are certain individuals out there who are not paying, and that they are being protected, I think you should bring that out.
And what would, honestly, what would be done with them? I think we all know, I mean, it sounds very nice to do that. Sounds like the right thing. Like I'm trying to do the right thing here. You see the right thing, you see the wrong thing, you try to do the right thing for people. But it doesn't happen. So I have very little faith in a system that's going to go after those people, when it's been ongoing for a long time. And, you know, just, just like I said that night, and I don't want to belabor this anymore, when Mr. McDowell would not even allow those tax auditors to come to a meeting just to discuss the process, what does that tell you?
Anyone else on the question? The motion is to amend file of council number 82-2007. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
Sorry, folks. But tomorrow's another day. Now, next, I have a few more issues. If this would be agreeable to my honorable colleagues, council requests a letter to the University of Scranton and the Public Safety Department on behalf of Hill Section residents requesting a proactive plan and increased surveillance of off-campus student dwellings on March 15, 2008, St. Patrick's Parade Day. And I think all of us did receive a letter from a concerned resident. I'm just going to give this briefly, not the entire letter. Last year's parade day, celebrated by the off-campus students that live in these rundown dwellings, involved almost 24 hours of drinking, harassment, fights, and vandalism. Hundreds of partygoers, mostly underage, descended on our neighborhood throughout the morning hours. These student tenement buildings were full of partiers inside and on porches throughout the day. Late in the afternoon, these drunken parties turned destructive as students, including many friends from out of town spilled out onto the streets, harassing residents in their homes and assaulting young people walking home from the parade. And it goes on, and that paragraph ends, "Our police officers did their absolute best to cover dozens of city blocks around this school that day." The next morning, these students took off for spring break, and you know what happened thereafter. I don't want to go into that incident. But again, if council agrees, I'd like that letter sent to the university and to the Public Safety Department. Yes, thank you. The mayor recently stated that he intends to tear down the remaining theater structure at Naug Park because a replacement is impractical. And before the door closes on this project, I have several questions which require responses from the administration. I'd like to know the name of the insurance company and agent that insured the tent theater at Naug Park. Why didn't the city file an insurance claim to repair the theater? Also, was the structure insured with inadequate, inadequate coverage? And if so, why? Further, why was the tent not dismantled from the frame during the winter months? And why was a decision made to tear down the theater one year after the actual damages occurred? And if my colleagues agree with my concerns, I'd like letters sent to, on behalf of council, to the mayor, Mr. Brazil, Mrs. Novembrino, and attorney Patterson, requesting responses to the aforementioned questions.
Any objection, or, go ahead.
I just would like to add one thing. I don't know if you'll agree, but I, I think the tent should stay there.
Me, too.
I do, too.
And I've talked to Bob Schlesinger from the Scranton Public Theater, and it was very successful.
Yes.
So I would like to add that in there, that the mayor do whatever he can to reinstate that tent.
Mm-hmm, I agree.
However we can do it. And then I agree with the whole thing.
Any objections to the letter?
No.
Honorable...
No.
I was just going to ask Mrs. Garvey to do that.
Thank you.
On a related topic, I'd like to know if the Tree House is insured, and by what insurance company and agent. And also, I wish to know how it can be insured with only one entrance exit. I also have, this was built up now over three weeks, some citizens' requests. And then I finished.
The lighting, why you were coughing, huh?
The 2100 block of Brick Avenue, residents report that in front of and across from 2158 Brick Avenue, both sewers are blocked.